Good evening and welcome to the April 6th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And I would like to start with attendance, so I will start with Selectmen Triano.
President.
Selectmen La Blank.
President.
Selectmen Daniels.
President.
Selectmen Sad, I believe is not with us. And I am Selectmen Lamash, I am also present. We also have our Madam Town Manager in with this meeting also. Before we really get started with the agenda, I would ask you to please take a moment and possibly pray for Jeffrey A. Wilson. He was our retired fire chief and he passed away March 17th. He began his fire service in Oxford in 1972. He eventually became chief and retired in 2010. Jeffrey also served on several committees in Oxford, including the Fire District 7, the Homeland Security, and Central Mass EMS Corporation. He will be greatly missed by many of us, so if you would take a moment to remember him, please. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And I have a proclamation to read. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Oxford Police Department. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of the town of Oxford have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suspension suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of the town of Oxford have radiated strength and calm while providing support to first responders and making a difference in the lives of our citizens. And whereas each of Oxford's dispatches has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during an extraordinarily challenging time, working amidst the conditions brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic this past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford proclaim this week of April 11th to the 17th of 2021 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our town and citizens safe. And this has been given under the entire Board of Selectmen on the 6th of April of 2021. We thank them. Board members, anyone have anything to say?
I'd just like to say, as a first responder myself, I do not envy the job that they do. Telecommun- dispatchers have a very difficult job. They filter through many, many calls throughout their shifts. And a lot of times, the difficult calls that they do take, they don't always get follow-up with, which leaves them hanging. So I appreciate everything that they do. I have a scanner here at my house and I listen to the Oxford dispatchers. They're very professional. And they seem, sounds like, for the most part, they stay calm in stressful situations, which is very important. So I just want to say I appreciate everything that they do.
Thank you, Selectmen Daniels. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to also say something. Mike pretty much took the words out of my mouth. I also listened to the scanner, listened to the dispatchers. And I'm a big supporter of our dispatchers. They do a great job sending our police, fire, and EMS where they need to go. They are very good at communicating, and I think that we do a great job. So I just also wanted to say thank you, and I think that this is a warranted proclamation for them.
Very well said. Thank you. Anyone else? I agree. I've said it for years that I believe this town is so fortunate. We have such great people that work for our town. And this is an example, our dispatchers are just so superior in what they do. And they help the police and fire. And I'm sure as well DPW is involved with their communication as well. So I also thank them for that. All right, next item on our-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would just like to echo what all the board members said. And I would also like to thank the board for recognizing the work that the dispatchers do by making this week in honor of them. Any of us who have lived in town for a number of years have noticed how busy it has become. The traffic is just crazy, the amount of accidents have increased, the amount of calls have increased, to the point where we have tried to staff that second dispatcher during the busy times because one person can't do it alone anymore in this community. When I first came on, that wasn't the case. One person could handle it, but you get one major incident now. You get one major accident with vitality or a serious injury. And/or if you get a fire, another fire can attest to this too. That takes up all of the dispatcher's concentration. Nothing else stops, as we know. The phone still rings, people come to, still come to the front door, and they get it done. So I am very proud of our dispatchers, and I just want to recognize our full-time dispatchers. That's Joanne Summers, Daniel Webster, Brittany Morgan, Stephanie DeVarekas, Trina Deary, and Thomas Schlodenmeyer. They all do a fabulous job. So thank you again for the recognition. We really appreciate it.
No, thank you, Chief Sad. Very well said. Thank you. All right, not seeing or hearing any more comments. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Lorna Kelly, 45 Clara Barton Road, looking for a special permit for unregistered motor vehicles. I'll read the public notice into the record. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 3, Section 7.0 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Oxford, Lorna Lee Kelly of 45 Clara Barton Road, North Oxford, Mass. 01537, has applied to the Board of Selectmen to obtain a special permit for unregistered motor vehicles at 45 Clara Barton Road, North Oxford, Mass. 01537. The property is currently owned by Lorna Lee Kelly and is identified on Oxford's Assessors Map 11 Parcel B07 and at the Registry of Deeds and Book 49862, page 119. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, April 6, 2021, at 7:10 PM via Zoom. And the information was also posted. Now, this is a public hearing, and if anyone in the public is on their cellphone and would like to talk, when allowed to do so, just hit *6 and you will be able to speak to the board. And if you are on your computer, again, once the board has gone through our discussion, I will open it up to the public, and all you have to do is unmute your computer and try to get my attention. Okay? And so with that, I'll bring it to the manager. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, because it's a public hearing, I don't think it was in your notification package to actually enter into the public hearing through a vote and then close the public hearing. And then I would add commentary for you.
Yes, thank you. It's a good thing you're checking on me. Okay, I entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
Make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We are in the public hearing. Thank you. So back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. - yeah, no, you're the chair. I get to -
Yes, okay.
I know. It's all right. It's all right.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to bring to the awareness of the board. You have a number of documents related to this public hearing. Within your packets, you will see a letter from the actual building commissioner dated January 20th, 2021, related to following up on complaints concerning traffic to the existing property, which is now before you, requesting a special permit with regards to unregistered vehicles. The building commissioner had cited that, both in terms of the district use regulations and storage of unregistered cars, more than two, that the residents of the property would have to come before the board, hence you have them before the board. I do believe that also within your packets, we've included in each of your packets the zoning bylaws related to when a resident and property owner can come before the board to request whether they can be granted a special permit to exceed the number of two unregistered cars per property. I would just like the board to actually look at that zoning bylaw document, particularly the area of Section 7.0, which actually speaks specifically to the Board of Selectmen. And the conditions that it lays out there for each special permit, because the board hasn't done one of these in quite some time. As you can see, under Section 7.2, the Board of Selectmen may grant a special permit to keep, store, or allow more than two such vehicles to remain on the parcel of land. Each such special permit shall, one, specify the maximum number of such vehicles that may be kept, stored, or allowed to remain on such parcel. Number two, be limited to a reasonable period of time. Three, be a personal privilege of the applicant and not a grant attached to and running with the land. The next section says the board shall not grant the special permit unless it finds that presence of more than two such vehicles on such parcel. Going under that section will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of this bylaw, and will not constitute a nuisance, and will not adversely affect the neighborhood in which such parcel is situated. Again, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board for those. You also have a letter in here from Ms. Lorna Lee Kelly, which is actually seeking this special permit. One that is dated February 18th, and also one that's dated February 10th. The final aspect in here I would like to point is an actual property map. And I don't know, Tim, if you have the actual property map, but the map shows 45 Clara Barton, which has a very large solar array on it, and also has buildings, including residential buildings and outbuildings. Maybe right now. So this is the first aerial view of the property. I've asked him to put it up so that you might be able to see it. Obviously Clara Barton is to the front of the, or the top of your screen, along with the residential dwelling right running parallel to it. And then you see the outbuildings in towards the back of there, but obviously quite some distance from the solar array. So if you look at the map that we've included, your assistant for the board had highlighted two green areas. Ms. Kelly was asking for potential storage behind the second building, long building, and that's listed in green or highlighted in green. And then also potentially in the far corner of this solar array, which is right up against, I believe, a gas line or electrical line, a power line. So you can see in this Google map satellite, in that far corner, there are some vehicles and already, and I don't know if those exist now, but if you were to zoom into them, there, this is the area where she may want to store some of these extra vehicles. And it looks from this Google map like at one point in time, there were extra vehicles. I cannot speak to that today. I think that's something that the board should ask the applicant. And other than that, that's all I wanted to make sure that the board had for information in order to ask questions and to make sure that they understood what was being asked of them as a special permit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Board members, comments, questions? Well, before we do that, excuse me. Lorna Kelly, would you like to kind of present your point of view, reason for this special permit? You need to unmute yourself. You need to unmute yourself.
I got it. I got it. I got it. Sorry. Sorry about that. This is my first show on this. I would like to have the extra vehicles. My son and I restore some vehicles. We have some Jeeps, some trucks and such. And we have older trucks that have good transmissions and engines that will take those parts out of, and then we'll scrap the carcasses. That's what I would like to do. Some of that stuff that you saw on the Google map, some of those vehicles have already been scrapped. There is also a pile of scrap back there too, not, and that's also been gone. In January, we did a lot of cleanup and a lot of removal after we were notified that we couldn't store unregistered vehicles, more than two. My family's been here 72 years, and I've been here 62 years. My father used to have stuff everywhere. So we've done a considerable amount of cleaning. But I would like to be able to have some used vehicles to be able to do our projects.
All right. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if I may. Thank you. I just, I read the zoning bylaw, and I just want to clarify something. So to clarify, you can have two unregistered vehicles on your property. That's not referencing two vehicles total, correct? It's just because they're unregistered or unlicensed? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And how, out of curiosity, how did this matter come to the town? How, was there, was there a concern from a neighbor? How did, I mean, if Ms. Kelly's been in Oxford for this long and has been doing things, I'm curious, how did we, how were we made aware of it?
Town Manager, do you have that answer?
All I have is concluded into your packets on January 20th. You have a notice from the building commissioner. I have no idea why he was alerted to the property, except that if you read that, it does say that they had received a complaint about traffic to the property involving tow trucks and vehicles for repair. After inspection of the property on January 21st, 2021, I witnessed there were several unregistered vehicles and vehicles with dealer plates. I'm hereby notifying you that you are in violation, da-da-da-da-da. That's how it happened.
Okay.
Um, thank you. I appreciate that. And is there anyone else? Mr. Chairman, is there anyone else here at the meeting who might be a neighbor or someone in a butter or anything like that?
I believe there are several people here. I know one anyway, so that's why I was letting the board maybe ask questions or have comments, and then let the people speak.
Okay. I'm all set. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any other board members? Comments right now? Questions?
I'll wait until after any neighbors speak, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. Okay. All right, then, this is a public meeting, so if there's someone in the public that would like to speak, like I said, either *6 if you're on a cellphone or unmute yourself and let me know who you are and your address, please.
I'd like to ask a few questions if I could. I'm at 52 Clara Barton Road.
Okay, and your name?
Adam Mancini.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, so my first question was, I too noticed a lot of tow trucks going in and out of the property, delivering and taking multiple cars. So to be clear, I'm all for, you know, people having businesses and stuff like that. But if that's what she's going to be doing, I would like some clear, like, hours of operation. How many cars are going to be on the property? And is it going to be for salvage, like, you know, like a junkyard? Or is it just storage-type stuff? To me, it looked like tow companies that either were repossess, repossessing cars or maybe towing for the police department of some sort.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mancini, for your questions and comments. I'm sure we'll, we'll get those for you. Anyone else from the public? No? All right, then.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one person. They're unmuting right now.
Hello?
Hello, yes.
My name's Gary Byron. I live at 49 Clara Barton Road. At one point, I was going to call the town because the traffic is ridiculous. But after speaking to my mother, I didn't call the town. I've had people come up to my house asking me if I called the town on Mrs. Lorna Kelly, and I haven't. There's cars coming in and out all day long. Some people go to the solar farm, I understand that. Tow trucks at 11 o'clock coming in, shining through your windows. You can't sleep. I got a prosthetic leg. I usually sit at my bedroom window, and I smoke cigarettes. So one day I sat there and I counted 38 vehicles coming in and out. There's, I have to watch the side of my house because in the summer, you know, there's some dust, and I can't open up my windows all the way because the dust comes in my house. So I would strongly disagree for storing cars there and stuff like that. I know our son works on automotive vehicles in the new metal barn that they put up. It wasn't on the picture. So I thought it was just farming zone only, not automotive work, you know? That's my beef. You know, I have nothing against Lorna or her son, but the amount of cars is ridiculous. If they were to move the traffic from the dirt road into their driveway, I'd say, okay, but it doesn't happen. It's always on the dirt roadside of my house, and like I said, it's all day long. But that's all I have to say. I wouldn't want you guys to approve it, but I don't know, you know? So that's all I got to say.
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to say that Betty Carlson and my husband Ron here, we live across the street at number 38. And I realize that the solar farm uses that dirt driveway because that, they actually put that in there for that, for the solar farm, as far as I knew. But I don't understand why the, any other automotive vehicles would have to go in that driveway.
Or not go in that driveway.
Or why they couldn't go in the driveway that's by the house so that they wouldn't bother the buyers. I do know that, I mean, we see almost no cars going in there, very few. And we're out walking our dog all the time, so. I've never counted even close to what Gary is saying, but he's right next to it, so, you know, he sees a lot more than I do. I'm just saying that we don't have any objection to what Lorna's asking for.
Okay. Well, thank you very much also. Anyone else? Then board members, I know Selectmen Triano, you said you'd leave your comments. So I think we've heard from the public. You got questions now or comments?
Could we have Lorna respond to the first gentleman that spoke? He had some questions, and I think they overlap with some of mine. I'd be curious to hear the answers to those questions.
Sure. I believe, Lorna, the answers that Selectmen Triano was talking about is the first person was Adam, and he was asking a few questions. Number one, how many cars were you thinking? And what would be the hours of operation? And would this be used kind of as a junkyard? I believe those were his three questions. Could you answer those?
Absolutely no junkyard. What Gary is referring to is we did a favor for a friend that my son works for. He needed a place to store 10, 15 cars until he closed on another piece of property so he could move his cars to that other piece of property. So there was a lot of traffic in the driveway. But I think Gary can say that since January, since the gentleman did get his closing on his property and moved the cars, that the traffic has not been like it had been. It was a favor. It didn't last that long at all. My son does detail cars. He does safety checks as far as working on cars, like publicly. That is not happening. Right. So to answer the gentleman down the street's question about how many cars are they going to be parked in his place? Behind his house is a hayfield. It's always going to be a hayfield. I have horses and such. About the dust in the driveway, I mean, Gary has been, and his mom have been complaining about the dust. We put shrubs up to try to block the dust. We've dried, we've wet the driveway and the arena. Dust I can't control. I'm very sorry that he's upset about that. Did I miss something else? Did I miss another question?
Hours of operation, you know, when you're moving vehicles?
Actually, most of the vehicles have been coming up my private driveway since our notification of being upsetting Gary. And we do our best to be like 8 to dock, 8 to 8.
Okay. All right, and you answered the other question about why you're using the dirt driveway instead of your own driveway. That would probably cut down on- Why you're using the uh dirt driveway instead of your own driveway? That would probably cut down on. I know I know that uh you've got the solar park and they gotta they gotta use that, that's there right away. Um, but for your vehicles uh that are coming in and out, I think the neighbors are asking if you could use your own personal driveway. Must be tied or something like that, I would presume.
It's not really, but it's further away from his house. And like he says, he's in his window, you know, all all the time. So he does see and and it's affecting him apparently, so.
Okay.
So we we have done, we have moved um or let people know if they were gonna come up to see Tom or work. Uh, over here or whatever to come and use this driveway. Even big vehicles. See, that driveway was designed to deliver hay to our barns and such because it's wider. And um, it gives more swing room for big trowels and trucks to come in. That's why we let the tow trucks. That brought the cars and use that driveway because it's just much easier to get in and out.
Okay, I I don't know if I missed. Did you say how many vehicles, the number of vehicles you were thinking you wanted?
Asking to have ten, and and that would be behind the new barn and in the back corner where um. Uh, I I'm the the nice lady that showed that um, the map of my property. Um, back there. It's not on, it can't be seen by, you know, any of the neighbors or anything else. We don't want to cause any disruption to anybody.
All right, thank you. Selectman Triano, does that answer those questions?
Yes, um, you had said that you had wanted the vehicles for projects, um, but asking ten vehicles. It seems like more of a business than a project. Um, are you operating a business, like ref- refinishing them and selling them, or why would you need ten?
Well, we have three or four right now. Um, a few pickups and a Jeep and a couple other cars. That have spare parts, spare parts cars to go with them, so that comes up to eight right there. And then I have two vehicles that I use on the farm that aren't registered because they never leave the farm. One, I bring hay out to the horses. And then I have a dump truck that I pick up rocks and such, you know, off the, out of my pastures and um to maintain the fields. Um, and I and I don't register those two vehicles because they never go on the road. So that would become, that would be the the ten vehicles for that were that were redoing, and no, they're not re- being resold. Um, they're uh classics. And um for for uh parts, and then once the parts are removed from them, they will be scrapped.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Right. Uh, anyone else from the board have a question?
Chairman, if you don't mind, I I just have a quick follow-up question unless, but I've already spoken unless.
Yeah, that's, go right ahead. Yep.
Good. Um, uh. You, thank you for clarifying the number of cars, Lana. I really appreciate that. Now I understand where the ten is coming from. But you mentioned something about, um, I don't know if it was your son or if it was someone else who, uh, he uh. He did some car detailing or something along those lines? Is that also being done on your property, or did I misunderstand that?
It's temporarily happening now. Um, he is, he works for a gentleman building a building. That's was where the car problem came from in the beginning because he was closing on a piece of property. He's building a place there for in the interim. He he just, he cleans cars.
And um, is it, is it um, is it daily? Is it weekly? I, what, you know what? I'll tell you what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to understand the traffic concern and um. And so I just wanna kind of understand the traffic that's flowing in and out of your house daily. Um, so is he, is he doing car detailing like once a day? Is it is that type of thing, or is he doing more than one a day?
It could, it could be up to five a day, six a day maybe.
Okay.
But if we keep them coming up at this driveway next to the house, which takes the way, it gives a good distance, good pad between the two houses, so no dust or anything. And no, shouldn't be much noise. They're cars. They're not like, you know, race cars or anything. It's just cars.
Okay, thank you. And and just my last question, how big is your property? I mean acres, acre.
It's about twenty-five acres.
Okay. All right, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Selectman Daniels, I think you were gonna comment.
Yeah, I just had a question. Um, but the cars that are be- being stored on the back of the property in the field. What condition are those vehicles in regarding um any types of gasoline, oil? Hydraulics, lubricants, any of that stuff in those vehicles?
No, there there is nothing currently. There are dry vehicles that they're, the engines and transmissions are good. And we're leaving everything together until we can drag them down and separate them. And they're, but their fluids are drained.
Okay. And then how long do you typically hold on to these vehicles for? Uh, before they're both scrapped out and salvaged?
Well, that it depends on the on the project and the time of year. Um, some, because they're older vehicles, it's it's finding something that has a decent transmission and engine in it. Um, and then being able to take that other vehicle apart and then house that other, um, the. Found vehicles guts into that new vehicle.
Okay.
So it it can it can be six months, it could be a year.
Okay.
And then the the, after that, the cab and the transmission, I mean, the cab and the frame and all of that is scrapped out at like scrap house. Metal scrap.
Okay, those are the questions I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Um, well, Lana, from your answers, it sounds like you're running a business. I mean, if you're detailing cars, maybe five a day, you got. You're bringing cars in, dismantling them, taking the parts. Um. When I was younger, I worked on a junkyard, and that's what we did. And it sounds like a business.
Well, he works for this gentleman. He doesn't like work, this isn't his business. It's not like, um, you know. The Kelly Scrap Yard or anything like that. It is just, he works for Gary Jackson Motors. And in the interim, until Gary gets his building built, he's been doing it out of our back of our barn.
Okay. All right. That's a good answer. Well, board members, what would you like to do with this? Uh, well, before we do that, any any more comments from the uh public?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I have one more.
Yes, you may add. Go right ahead.
So I don't have a problem with, the the problem isn't what she's doing now with uh deep. And I don't know if the town has a problem with it, but as far as I think we're concerned. Um, what she's doing with a few cars detailing or scrapping a few cars is no big deal. I think where the problem came were um between six to ten tow trucks. A day coming up and down the road, delivering and taking cars. I think that is the main focus. And so long as that's not gonna happen, then I don't really think anybody's gonna have a problem except for maybe. A little bit of dust driving up and down the the dirt road. So I ju- I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna turn bad. I know she said she was doing a favor, but um, we live on a, it's a small road. It it's it's pretty beat up. It probably hasn't been updated in twenty years and, you know, the trucks were coming up and down the road. Uh, quite frequently and quite fast. And I think that was the the big concern, but. The little detailing and the scrapping cars, and I know her son's a mechanic and he has, you know, dirt bikes and trucks and all that, and that's great. Everybody does that. So that, I don't think that's the 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 big problem for the people. I don't know if it is for the town or not, but for the people, I don't think it is.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the uh public? Any more comments? All right, then not hearing any, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
Make that motion.
Excuse me, uh, Gary, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was trying to unmute my microphone. Um, I would, I would be very happy if um the cars could go up Lana's driveway. Um, I understand, like I said, the solar farm, and I understand that tow trucks and everything, you know, a wide turn and everything, and I, that's not a problem. But like local traffic that comes to her house, if she could just use her driveway, and I, I don't have a problem with it.
They're actually both my driveways, though.
Well, yeah, technically, they're both your driveway. Um, but I wasn't.
You must admit, Gary, that since January, a lot of traffic has been coming up my driveway and not near your house, correct?
That is correct, and that and that made me happy. Um, since I got you here, I'd like to say I did not call the town on you.
I know you did, so we'll we'll drop that right there.
Okay, whatever.
All right. Very good. Any other comments from the public? All right, well, we have a motion from Selectman Triano to close a public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second, so with that, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent, so we have closed a public hearing, so now I'll return it back to the board as. A uh what we'd like to do in regard to this request.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think that we have two separate issues here. Um, in the midst of the public hearing, it seems that the detailing. Came about, however, um, I think that we would need to stay focused on the special permit for unregistered motor vehicles. Because that's what the public hearing was for, and that's what the agenda item is for, so I I'm. I'm going to not really comment on the detailing aspect of it. Um, because I think that's more of an issue that may or may not need to be dealt with at a later time. As far as the special permit for unregistered motor vehicles, I don't have a problem with granting it. Um, so long as common courtesy continues to be followed, it seems like everyone's on the same page that since January, things have gotten better. Um, so I think that if we were to put some sort of provisions on that, you know. Unless there's an emergency, we won't have tow trucks coming at ten o'clock at night. Um, I think within reason that the special permit for unregistered motor vehicles would be okay based on the parameters that she described.
Okay, any other board members? Comments?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
I'll, I uh kind of agree with Selectman Triano. Um, there are two different issues brought up here, uh, but. The issue with the detailing and operating a business in town, uh, a residence without a permit, business permit. Is obviously an issue be, and it that does go hand in hand with the uh. Permit that we're looking at tonight, um, because the the complaint and the concern was the amount of traffic on the road. Uh, the permit on hand tonight for storing the cars, um, again, as long as they're the dry cars, like you explained, on the back lot, that's fine. Um, just with concerns for leaking oils and gases into the uh land out there in the backfields. Um, we really need to know that they're they're the dry cars. Um. As for the business as- aspect of it, that that's something that definitely needs to be addressed at some point.
Right, but um, I agree with Selectman Triano. This is a special permit just for the unregistered vehicle. So we really can't talk about or do anything with the detailing, so that'll. That is something that comes up with business permits or whatever or something later on. That's got nothing to do with tonight, so. Um, I do have uh a concern with ten vehicles. Um, I think that's kind of excessive. I'd I'd like to see it. I don't mind the eighty-eight hours. It seems like that's fair. Uh, the neighbors didn't seem to ma- to mind that. It's not gonna be a junkyard. Um, but I I would like to see it more down around the eight vehicles, uh, personally. But that's up to the board, and I would entertain a motion as to what the board would like to do. So do I have a motion, or do we wanna?
I would make a motion to approve the special permit for unregistered motor vehicles. Um, at forty-five Clarabotten Road with the understanding that um the hours of operation, if you will, will be. Eight AM to eight PM unless there's an emergent situation that arises.
An unlimited number of vehicles?
Um, I I mean, I was okay with the ten because the two. That she uses specific for the farm, like I would consider those her agricultural vehicle. They're not specifically agricultural vehicles, so they don't technically fall under that category, so. I guess, I don't know if I can say eight unregistered vehicles excluding those two that she uses for the farm. If that makes sense, because I'm okay with there being a total of ten, including the two that she uses specifically for the farm.
So we're talking ten? I mean, even.
But if those two. But if those two leave, then it would drop down to eight, like eight project vehicles. But I don't think that we can, I don't know, we can clarify that in the permit or not.
I I don't think we can. I think it's gotta be a pretty clear number by the bylaw, is my interpretation. Yeah, ma- maximum number of such vehicles, so, you know. Then we'd be talking the ten, you know, because that way there, how do you know those two vehicles left and then they didn't bring two more vehicles, you know, it's. So, so you'd like to make your motion say ten. I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, I would, I would do, because the way I read the the bylaw, um, designed and used for agricultural purposes. The, they're not technically designed for agricultural purposes, but they are used for agricultural purposes. So I think that they would need to be included in the number, so because of that, I will say ten. But if if with clarification, they don't have to, those two don't have to be included, then I would say eight. I don't know if, Jen, can you, are you following what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I think you're creating um a the descriptor to what types of vehicles. I think. You're, if it's a vehicle, it's a vehicle. Um, I think that it's just the total number, regardless of what the purpose is. Um, I think more important for the board to consider before they they finalize this motion is look at that section of the bylaw. Where it says specify the maximum number of vehicles that may be kept, stored, or allowed to remain on such parcel. The next uh seven point two two says be limited to a reasonable period of time. And not run as a personal privilege to the applicant, um, in terms of granting it to be running with the land. So in other words, if this is a temporary thing for six months, then you need to say six months. If you start saying in the concerns that some of the board members may have for this being a rotating in and out. Uh, yes, that has to do with a different aspect of zoning bylaw, um, that the board doesn't have the ability to exercise on. So um, I do believe that if you look at that, it's just the number of vehicles that the board has discretion over. Um, and the reasonable period of time, and that it's, uh, you know, not something that would be concurrent all the time. In other words, once that time period is expired, so too would the, that amount.
So so are you saying that i- if when we set a time limit of six months or one year, that once, once that time limit's up? If uh they would like to bring more vehicles on site, they have to apply for another permit?
So so the next, so the next section of that bylaws basically is saying that the board can't. Or shall not grant a special permit unless it finds the. the board can't, shall not grant a special permit unless it finds the presence of more than two vehicles on such parcel, which I said, you know, had occurred, um, by the findings of the building commissioner, but will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw and will not constitute a nuisance and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. So if you find that, um, those things exist, and you're not going to nullify or substantially derogate from the existing bylaw, then you could say, yes, we will set a number and we'll set a period of time, and we can do that for this particular request, um, for, for the time period and the maximum number of vehicles. But you have to be willing to say that you think that, that, you know, on 7.3, you know, you can now do this to exercise the parameters of 7.2. Does that answer your question at all? I'm just trying to get the board to know, yeah, I don't, you know, if you came to the conclusion on 7.3 that, you know, yes, they had two vehicles and, and these, it's not going to, you know, substantially um, deviate from the intent of, um, or diminish the intent of the bylaw, then yes, you can go forward and say, all right, 10 cars, uh, for a reasonable time period, six months, um, and then the rest of it, whether it's a business or this or that, you don't have, um, any authority over. And so you are right, um, all three of you, when you spoke about separating them. But even before you separate them, just be mindful that your motion has to at least conform to, one, you believe you have the authority to do this, and two, you're following the parameters given to you to, to make, um, a decision and what that decision will be, limited number of vehicles, time period, and that the, um, the decision you're making tonight doesn't mean that they can just keep doing this into perpetuity. Okay, I just want you to be clear on that.
I think I actually understand that. You know, so.
I agree.
I think, so, so in essence, what we're doing is that we're really just voting on the zoning bylaw, and as a result of that, we can, we can indicate the number of cars, but we can set a set period of time. And so if we were to do a year, for example, and then we had Lana come back, we could have her come back, we could have the neighbors come back, see if things, you know, if everyone is still happy, and then we could renew it again. If, am I reading that correctly? Chair, Mr. Chairman, does that sound like?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Right, because this is, uh, if you look at 7.2, 0.3, uh, it's a personal privilege of the applicant, and it's, it's not attached to the running with the land. So if we did it in, uh, forever, it'd be attached to the land, and we can't do that.
I see, I got you.
Yes, uh, Town Manager.
I think, you know, one of the things that I think maybe the board is struggling here is because there are two aspects to this, um, in that the request did come from the applicant to try to make this decision. I think it's very important to be mindful that there are two aspects to this, and we may not have, the board may not have all that information. And like other, uh, public hearings, maybe it's better to continue the hearing to get more information, um, and perhaps, um, you know, get a better clarity on that with regards to this, the information that sort of has percolated up, and then, um, you know, have the applicant before the board at another time. That's not unusual for us in a public hearing. We might want to ask, um, you know, more information, uh, with regards to those, um, town officials, which may interest in further looking at this, and I don't mean just the, uh, the original, uh, letter coming from the Office of Land Management. Um, there may be some others that want to lend, and I think it would help the board to sort of congeal around what they, they really believe should happen at this point in time. That's just a suggestion, and because it's a public hearing, you have the right to, to, um, defer the decision tonight and to, you know, to postpone it and come back.
Okay, sounds good. Board members?
So, Mr. Chairman, do we have a motion on the table or no?
Well, kinda, you know. She started it, and then I asked the question about number of vehicles, and so.
Okay. So, uh, to answer your question then, Mr. Chair, then my motion would be for 10 vehicles, and I would say for a period of a year, and then we could reconvene and see if the neighbors are still okay with how it's going to consider extending it further than that.
I would second that.
Okay, and just to clarify, you also said eight to eight at the beginning originally was part of your motion, correct?
Yes.
So we got.
Unless there was, unless it's an emergent situation, um, but yes, reasonable, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay. And we have a second from, uh, Selectman LeBlanc, so eight to eight, 10 vehicles. Uh, she can do this for a year and then have to come back to us. So that's the motion, correct? I got it right?
Yes.
Yes.
In the second. All right, any more comments?
Uh, can, can the people speak again?
No, not from the public. Public, uh, hearing is over, I'm sorry. Um, so, that being said, that's a motion and a second, and I don't hear any more from the board. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. So Lana, you have that, eight to eight, unless an emergency, 10 vehicles, and you have a year. Okay, very good. And we thank all the, uh, public for coming in and voicing your concerns. Hopefully, we've met most of your concerns, and, uh, in a year, you can come back, and we'll do it again. All right, next item on our agenda is our Parkinson Awareness Month. And I am going to, do you have a copy of the, uh, proclamation, Selectman LeBlanc?
Oh, um.
In your packet?
Yes, it's in our packet.
Well, I was, I, yeah, I was going to turn this over to you, since you're the one that, uh, you know, brought this to our attention for, uh, and did not know if you wanted to talk a little bit for Tim.
Sure.
How's that?
So, uh, so to the remainder of the board, I had reached out to the Town Manager and to, um, the Chairman. Um, Parkinson, um, I had, uh, Mr. McMillan, who is a resident in the town of Oxford, had reached out to me and asked if the Board of Selectmen would consider, um, proclaiming April to be Parkinson's Awareness Month. Um, it, it is a very debilitating disease. Um, I, I know that there are multiple people within the town of Oxford who unfortunately, um, suffer from this. And so, um, I was able to, uh, with the Chairman's approval and the Town Manager, we were able to issue a proclamation, um, making this, uh, the Parkinson's Awareness Month. And, um, Tim, if I'm correct, because we agreed to, uh, do, uh, April as Parkinson's Awareness Month, I believe, uh, our very esteemed governor decided to follow suit, correct? And declared the entire state as Parkinson's Awareness, is that correct?
That is correct, Cheryl. Um, Governor Charlie Baker has cleared April as Parkinson's Awareness Month.
Excellent. Um, Tim, before I read the proclamation into the record, would you like to say a few words to the town and to our officials and so forth? And what we can do?
Uh, yes, I would like to thank the select board for proclaiming April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month and for allowing the opportunity to speak about Parkinson's. My name is Tim McMillan. I live at 12 Woodcrest Drive, North Oxford. I was 45 years old when I was diagnosed with young onset Parkinson's disease, also called YOPD, back in February of 2014. Parkinson's disease is a progress, progressive neurological disease, usually of later life, that is linked to decreased dopamine production in the brain. It was first medically described as a neurological syndrome by British surgeon Dr. James Parkinson's back in 1817. Approximately 60,000, 60,000 Americans are diagnosed with PD each year, and there are more than 10 million people worldwide that are living with PD currently. Parkinson's is complex. The typical symptoms are tremor of resting muscles, rigidity, soreness of movement, impaired balance, shuffling gait, and lack of facial expressions. Some not-so-common symptoms are loss of depth perception and dystonia, which is involuntary spasming of muscles. There are many services provided for patients by doctors, physical therapists, and occupational therapists. But there are many organizations that offer programs specifically for PD patients. Such organizations that are out there that I partake in are DOPF, Parkinson's Movement Center, which offers box, boxing, which has been clinically proven to slow the progression of PD. Creative Neurology, which offers art therapy, and a workshop for micrographia, which is small handwriting, another symptom of PD that works on the fine motor skills. Also, there is the American Parkinson's Disease Association, the Massachusetts chapter, the Parkinson's Foundation, New England Regional, and the Michael J. Fox Foundation, and we are firefighters with Parkinson's.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Tim, and, uh, thank you for sharing your story, and, um, we are honored to be able to proclaim this month. So I will read into the record, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A proclamation, whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, and whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will rise to 1.2 by 2030. It is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $52 billion annually, including direct and indirect costs. Research suggests that the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, and the exact cause and progression is still unknown. There is no relatively. Um, hold on a second. Uh, there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression, and the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. Volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professions are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's and their families. And increased research, education, and community support services, such as those provided by the Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations, are needed to find more effective treatment and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Oxford proclaim the month of April in 2021 as Parkinson's Awareness Month, signed by Dennis Lamarche, Megan Toriano, Cheryl LeBlanc, Michael Daniels, John Sad, and Jennifer Callahan. And we are thrilled and very happy, um, Tim, to allow us, thank you for allowing us to spotlight a little bit on this, and hopefully it'll be of some help to someone.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. The more awareness we can get out there, the better.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman LeBlanc. Uh, I would just like to comment that, uh, it's, it's an awful disease, and there are so many, and that's, uh, that's, it's just something that, um, unless people are, go through issues where they have people that have such a tough disease as Parkinson, uh, and is involved with that, with a family member or a friend or something, um, you, I wonder sometimes if, if people really understand it. And, uh, I personally can feel your pain. I understand. I, and I can't imagine what you will have to live with, uh, now and in the future. So I just say God bless you and wish you very well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other comments? All right, we thank you very much for coming, Tim. All right, that, uh, leads us to our next item, which is right of first refusal at 25 Town Forest Road, which is a modification of language in the waiver that I believe we have, uh, voted on before. So Town Manager, do you, uh, just want to?
Sure, a little background, um, it's for the board, uh, but it's not the first time. In 2001, at a December 18th meeting with the then Board of Selectmen, there was a vote that was taken, um, to allow the transfer of that property. Um, if the board, uh, will be reminded that this is up in the industrial park land that was once, um, owned by the town, still is for a number of lots, um, on which, um, they allowed businesses to begin. Um, so the right of first refusal, once the business is established, oftentimes if they're going to sell, um, the business to another owner, uh, they have to come before the board. So this Lot H in the Oxford Industrial Park had been, um, granted a first right of refusal in 2001. I've provided you, um, in your packets with the minutes for that. Um, you'll also see that you have a letter from Attorney Kathleen Mahoney, um, in there. Uh, she is specifying out that the current owner is Brian and Darlene Crowley of, um, the Town of Douglas, 6 Laurel Glades Douglas, is looking to sell the property and has a buyer, um, both Christopher St. Germain and Antoinette St. Germain, both of 15 Brook Hall, um, no, 15 Hallbrook Road of Oxford. Um, why, why this is before you is if you go further into your packets, you will see we provided you with the deed, and we highlighted an area, um, on the deed in which, uh, it does say that the sole insufficient evidence of waiver or release of the rights are hereby granted, um, to the grantee and shall be an instrument executed on behalf of the grantee. The problem here is it actually spells out that this is basically a one-time transfer versus, um, a subsequent to all transfers, um, in the, in the future. And, uh, so tonight, the board can either exercise its rights to grant another transfer until such time that new owners, after these owners come forward, um, and buy the property, or you can, um, grant, uh, to subsequent, um, transfers going forward, so they would never have to come back to the board. I understand, uh, in the past, sometimes the board has granted that, and other time periods in 2001, it looks like it was granted only for that particular sale. So, um, once that transfer, uh, is settled in your mind, you know, you can either do it for this time or do it for all subsequent transfers, and then the next owners, whoever they shall be, or when they sell the property, they would not have to come before the board for a first right of refusal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Manager. Uh, Board Members, what would we like to do? I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that the board vote to not exercise the right of first refusal concerning Lot H in the Oxford Industrial Park, also known as 25 Town Forest Road, Oxford, Mass, and per deed recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds in Book 942, page 244, and this shall apply to all subsequent transfers. I don't think it needs to keep coming back, in my opinion, so I would make my motion for all transfers going forward.
I'd second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's for an affirmative, one absent, uh, that is, we will not, uh, exercise our right, and that's for all future transfers. That's good to get that. Um, okay, next item is our civil, uh, fingerprint bylaw acceptance, and I believe our Chief Sad is in attendance, um, to go over this with us. Chief Sad, I'll open it to you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you all are aware, we had passed the civil fingerprinting bylaw at a town meeting, um, some time ago, um, and that pertains to certain licenses that are issued by your board and other boards, uh, within the town. Um, once that civil fingerprinting bylaw was passed, I was charged with the task of developing a policy along with, uh, Town Council, specifically Janelle Austin from KP Law. So we got together, um, completed a draft and a final, which is before you tonight for approval. Um, should the board approve this final, uh, policy tonight, um, the state, uh, agencies and appropriate federal agencies will be notified. What that will do, that will allow us, when somebody comes in to apply for these certain licenses, will be able to do a local state check and a federal check as well, which will give the board more information at hand in order to help in making a decision whether a person is responsible enough for certain types of licenses that they may be petitioning for. So before you tonight, you should have a six-page document, the policy in front of you, along with a waiver, a civil fingerprinting consent form. And with that, I will accept any questions or concerns that you might have, and I'll try to address them to the best of my ability. I'm sure you had a chance to read them. And especially if you have any concerns about how the, the police department is going to assist with the process. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions? Not seeing or hearing any, then I will entertain a motion to approve this policy.
I would make a motion that the board accept the civil fingerprint bylaw as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any more comments? Call for a vote, then.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. We now have a fingerprinting policies. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for your hard work.
I will, thank you, and I will inform the board when it is finalized and we can actually stop moving forward on it. Okay, thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, you too. All right, next item on our agenda is change of managers and officers at the American Legion Post 58. Let's see, this is a request to change from Cheryl Bolio and excuse me? Go ahead, yes.
Sure, no, no, it is to actually make the manager Cheryl. Just to remind the board that when Dee took over from the office and we were doing licensing back then, you know, one of the requirements for a, either a fraternal or military organization that runs as an American Legion or VFW is that they have a board of directors in which they have to actually, anytime there's changes, notify the town as well as notify who their chief operating manager would be. The town had been asking, requesting for these documents for quite some time, a number of months. So we finally do have them, and they do, in order to be formalized, the board has to accept Cheryl as the bar manager, and that's very important in, in order for their ABCC license to, to be able to be formalized and established and within good operating condition, as well as the list of actual officers. And you can see that list that's been presented as attachment B in your folder. So it's a formality, it's just that it came later than, than you probably were expecting. But it's good that it's in now.
All right, thank you, Madam Manager. I'll entertain a motion from the board unless we have other comments.
I would make a motion that the board approve the change of manager and officers requested by the American Legion Post 58 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this change. Any comments? Then I call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. That manager can be changed, very good. Next item on our agenda is from Chief Laurent McDonald requesting 11 lengths of hose that have failed their testing to be called surplus. So, Board members, any comments? Make a motion?
I would make a motion that the board declare the 11 lengths of hose noted in the email from Chief McDonald dated March 23, 2021 as surplus.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. Those hoses are surplus, thank you. We move on to next agenda is the Hannah Howard Scholarship Award. We have two applicants. So I will leave it up to the board. What would we like to do? Let's discuss, I guess. We have two, one and two.
I took a look at both of them, Mr. Chair. It looks like, from what I could see, number one was the only one that was going into the health field. So my vote would be for, my recommendation would be for number one.
Okay, any other comments? I agree that, that was, that one stood right out at me. Real detail application. I thought it was very, very well put together compared to number two. So I would also agree with that. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman? I would, I, I do agree. I think, I think that, I'm sure applicant number two felt that, that particular degree program that they were entering in was the health field. But I think the spirit of the Hannah Howard Scholarship is more in line with what the first candidate is doing. And so I too am in agreement. I do think that the first candidate is the more appropriate out of the two.
All right, thank you.
I
go right ahead.
Okay. I'm in, in agreeance with everybody else for candidate number one. But I, I do want to take this moment to just state that candidate number two, psychology, it, it is in the health field. Mental health is, is a big issue in today's society, especially after the pandemic. But I too am in agreeance with candidate number one, or application number one for the scholarship.
All right, well, then with all being said, I'd entertain a motion to make number one, the number one applicant as our Hannah Howard Scholarship applicant this year.
I'd make that motion. A second.
And we have a motion and a second, call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. Congratulations to candidate number one, whoever you may be. Very good.
Thank them both for applying.
Yes.
Thank them both for applying, that was fabulous.
Good point, thank you, Selectman LeBlanc for adding that, yes. Okay, next item is an outdoor business permit renewal for the Women's Club Annual Flea Market. Board members, I'd entertain a motion to approve this request.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Women's Club and a second, any comments? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's for an affirmative, one absent. They are approved to have their flea market annually in the field at St. Rock's Church. Very good, thank you. That leads us right down to the Town Managers' Report. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board. If, if I may, I wanted to see if it might be possible just to do a housekeeping thing. And I've actually asked our town planner, it's, it's listed as number eight on my Managers' Report. It's about the 40B workshop, and rather than have him go through my entire Managers' Report, I, I put that as number one. I wanted to remind the board during the last meeting, we had a follow-up email where we discussed the need to conduct a 40B workshop with Town Council, and we proposed a couple dates and relative to the council's availability. And we still have not solidified that with all board members, but we are trying to get it done as soon as possible. And I'd like tonight to see if we can look at our schedules. And, and I've asked Tony Sousa to come here, who's our Director of Planning and Economic Development, to sort of impress why we're, we're trying to get this done. We do have a need for that. And so if we can do that, Tony, I'll defer to you to talk just a little bit to the board about why we're going to be doing this.
Sure, thank you, and, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. So this would be an informational workshop to discuss the steps and timeline for 40B housing projects as detailed by, by state law. Now, the ZBA is the Local Permit Granting Authority for 40B projects, but there's also an important action item prior to the ZBA process in local communities for the respected Boards of Selectmen to, to authorize an applicant to advance to petition the state for what's called a project eligibility letter. There are some potential 40B projects on the horizon, although nothing has been filed. But it is important that, that we all, including ZBA, planning board staff as well, understand local board powers, constraints, limitations, what state jurisdiction is, and their overriding authority over local board decisions. Again, this is, this would be an informational workshop, and if possible, we would also invite the board and the other boards perhaps and, and public, or conduct other sessions too, as needed. Do believe that this is very timely and, and important as we move forward in, in reviewing possible 40B projects on the horizon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you, Tony. Question I, I have is, are we talking about maybe an evening meet, meeting? And is this a Zoom meeting that we're talking about?
Certainly, the, my thinking, if I may, is the, to conduct this as a Zoom meeting, and certainly at the convenience of the board, whether it be evening, afternoon, however the board sees fit, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, Board members. Well, okay, we don't really have to act on this, or would you like us to? I mean, I know you'd like us to, Jen, but you know.
No, no, so, so it's okay, Mr. Chair. I think we gave out two dates and we only had two board members. So, so what we'll do is we'll throw out tomorrow, we'll give you a date via email. If everyone can check quickly, you know, the couple dates that the attorney has, and then, then we can go forward and at least set it up. You know, I don't want it to conflict with, you know, your personal schedule so that you'll be able to get the most out of it. And it doesn't necessarily have to be an evening thing, but if that winds up being, we'll give a couple more dates, but that, you know, we're trying to get this done within the next couple of weeks, mainly because it seems like on the horizon we might be contending with a number of these. And you can see that people are quite eager in development terms after pandemic to, to get move on on things. So that'll be fine. But I did thought it was good to have Tony come and kind of impress upon that, especially after him telling me today, we may have another project that is being proposed. So I think it's gonna, you know, there are differences between locally initiated housing, affordable housing projects and ones that are not necessarily locally initiated. And I definitely think we need to understand the parameters in which we get constrained by that. So I think that'll be great, and we'll send that out tomorrow. I do appreciate that. And Tony, we'll, I'll follow up with you if we can get in touch with legal counsel and find out what days they may have available. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so.
Wait a minute. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just have a quick question on that one. I was wondering if it would be possible for us to consider the last week in April? I know it's probably further out than you would like, but I had been one of the ones that had responded with my availability, and because we hadn't picked a date, it has changed a little bit. So instead of juggling things around, if we can push it back to the last week in April, it might be easier, but if not, I can see what I can do.
Sure, I think we can, we can try to strive for that. Does that seem reasonable to you, Tony? Sometime during the last week of April?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll try to see which day works good. That way it's not interfering with a week that we have a, a board meeting. That's fine. Okay, terrific, thank you, thank you for the feedback. So the first item that I'm going to refer to on the Managers' Report has to do with Lions Club requests for the use of the common. They have been using it with a very small group for a couple times prior to this. They have passed by Board of Health for having COVID-friendly meetings, but they're looking to be on Jocelyn Park, April 19, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM for a meeting, just for a meeting, not for an event. So I would just ask if the board, because this came up after the agenda had been finalized, if they would be willing to at least grant them that with the permission of the Board of Health, obviously, for April 19.
I'd entertain a motion to approve that request.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent, they are approved.
Thank you, and I know we have a little something that I wanted to put up there. I told Fran King I would put it up. If anybody was traveling by the Town Common, they saw a very vibrant pink bunny, as you can see, with Lions Club. Like I said, they do a fantastic job. They had somewhere between 50 and 70 drive-by visits with the Easter Bunny. And I just want to thank them personally for what they did to generate some community spirit, and there they are, looking really fine, right before Easter Sunday. So thank you to them for that. I also wanted to let the Town Board know that the second item, which is going to be important and going to be coming up on the 20th for the board to actually approve the warrant, I wanted to remind the board that we had set March 30, which was a Tuesday, for the closing date of the warrant. I just want to briefly go over the fact that we've had a total of 23 warrant articles submitted for consideration to be placed on the warrant for our annual town meeting, which will be the first Wednesday in May. Obviously, we have these articles, they are being looked at and worked on as we speak with our legal counsel, and I do anticipate we're going to have them for the board's consideration on the 20th. Having said that, I do want to bring to the board's attention that we have what I call routine articles that come up every, every year. I'd say more than, more than half of some of those are reports of town officers and committees, or one article. Another one is paying outstanding bills from a prior fiscal year. We do have the budget itself, which is the omnibus budget article, as well as the capital planning article. The budget article is for a 40.7, now 40.8 million dollar balance budget, and the capital outlay article will be 1.7 million. We will also be doing the routine adoption of Chapter 90 money. This is looking like it will come to us from the state in the amount of $507,767. Our stabilization account, there will be an article to transfer money into that account, $250,000. Our OPEP or Other Opposed Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund article, which is now routinely on because of our policy for placing funds in there, we will be looking to appropriate $60,000 into that fund. The compensated absence fund, which helps us be able to plan for unexpected departures of employees and for other things that might relate to an absence of an employee, and that is $50,000 that will go into that fund if it's so approved at town meeting. We will be adopting the normal revolving accounts that we have and the spending limits associated with those, that is another article. Then we also have the transfer to PEG access and cable-related funds transfer, which of course is the transfer of funds that we receive from Charter that have been deposited into the general fund and will then be appropriated into the PEG access fund that we created last year. Then we have the transfer of unexpended, unexpended balance of 2007 appropriations. There is some money that was left over, and the request to the townspeople is that was originally going to be for a splash pad irrigation, the, the notion of trying to do irrigation related to the area around the splash pad, that did not turn out to be really feasible. And so we'd like to try to reappropriate that article for a request from the Recreation Commission for doing some irrigation at rural fields in the amount of $45,137.88. We have another transfer article for an unexpended balance related to a 2009 We have another transfer article for an unexpended balance related to a 2019 appropriation we did for streetlights. We'd like to try to ask for that to be reappropriated to the Carbuncle Beach parking lot pavement project in the amount of $50,000 so that we can have that entire project done without doing it in two phases. And then we have an article from the DPW with regards to a lease payment. As you know, in the fall of 2020, the town meeting authorized a lease agreement for the DPW for a number of vehicles. And we spelled that out in the fall, and this article is pretty much housekeeping to allow the payment of that lease now going forward in the amount of $150,000 to be appropriated at town meeting or adopted. There's also another article that relates to leasing, and that has to do with the lease to purchase. The DPW director is seeking an article to add the forestry vehicle to equipment authorized at Fall Town Meeting. And so that'll be a separate article to itself. There's also an article that's being proposed with regards to ride share assessment appropriation of funds that relate to the DPW's ride assessment program. The town actually gets a certain appropriation if it puts in for it and if we adopt this. It's not huge money, but it actually has been pretty good for us. The town never took advantage of it. I came and we found out, we got them to actually grant us previous years that we didn't have, and we used it for parks. Usually use it typically for pedestrian and recreational needs. And so this is so that we can accept that provision and we can get the money from the state. And that comes actually from companies like Lyft and Uber, those kinds of things pay an assessment to the state, and then they give it back to communities. You'd be surprised at how often that's used. The next item or the next article has to do with tailings. It's the adoption of a Mass General Law 200A Section 9A. This was a recommendation coming out of our call-in center or our Community Compact Financial Policies and Procedures Manual that we put together. Our collector treasurer is looking to make sure that we have this adopted, and tailings have to do with uncashed checks that actually the town winds up holding in a bayance or in a fund. And this would allow the town to actually deem them abandoned officially. But we never adopted that provision in the Massachusetts General Law. There is another article this year restricting gas and diesel-powered boats, vehicles, and other equipment from Carbuncle Pond. As you will remember, we had an article related to Robinson Pond for banning diesel-powered boats from operating there. There was, at that time, a request that we move next year in the commitment from my office that we would put this on as an article because it was requested to do so from our Conservation Commission and a number of residents. There has been some increased language requesting not just electric vehicles being allowed, but to ban any kind of powered instruments, ice augers, snowmobiles, things like that, where conservation and a number of residents around a Carbuncle feel that that is also a contributing factor to pollution. The last water quality tests that were done in late September were for cyanobacteria off the charts. And I think people understand that it's a small kettle fresh pond and that the limiting of any kind of diesel fuel, anything that has to do with fossil fuels that might contribute to the contamination or the water quality, that it will be very much welcomed by the people who live around the pond. But we do have some questions about the additional language, and we put that out to legal counsel. So I don't know how the article will appear, but we'll try to work that out with legal counsel in the end. There is also an article being presented in joint formation of our Conservation Agent, our DPW Director, and I also believe our Town Planner, which relates to land disturbance and stormwater management. And it's a repeal of some of the general laws that have been put in place. They want to consolidate and be more concise. This is to relate to the MS4 federal requirements, and this must be in place by June 30th of 2021. There's also an article that has to do with entering into agreements for foster care transportation that is being sponsored by the school department. And it relates to Title IV reimbursement authorization. There's also several articles that this board put before the planning board that all are going to have their public hearing. One relates to cluster development and implementing some low-impact development practices to preserve open space. Another one relates to parking and village business zoning district, and it allows legal on-street parking to qualify for some of the counts that a business would have. It would not affect residential uses. And then there's also an amendment to the table of uses, particularly with industrial districts, to add the potential uses to include hotels, motels, and country ends in an industrial district. And then there's also one last article that looks to remove tax title revolving fund. We put language in last year, but we wound up actually putting it within the normal revolving fund table, so to speak, and it's a housekeeping article, but we need to separate it because it's a different section of the law. So it's just to clarify that section, and legal counsel didn't pick up on it the last time, so we'll do that. So that is the 23 articles. You know, whether they'll all be in the same format before you on the 20th, I don't know yet, but we'll get that before the board so they can consider which articles to move forward for this town meeting. And that will be for your April 20th meeting. And then the next, if there are any questions, I don't know, but I think if we spend the time on the agenda item for the approval of a warrant on the 20th, I can certainly answer any questions you might have at that point in time. The next item is just to, I don't know if Chief McDonald is here. I don't want to steal his thunder, but I do want to congratulate the Fire Department and the Fire Chief for having received a grant from the State Department of Fire Services. We did get a letter in my office, the chief did too, from the state fire marshal with regards to a grant in which $14,998 will be coming to the town. Chief, are you still there by any chance? Didn't know if you wanted to chime in with regards to this. Maybe not. Oh, yep, there he is. There you go. I know that you put a lot of effort into it with your leadership team, and this has to do with, I think, cardio fitness. Can you kind of tell us a little bit about it, maybe?
Sure. Well, we figured there was two areas we really wanted to beef up on. One is the cardio, physical fitness. As you know, we've had some weightlifting equipment that was donated to us, and we've set up a nice gym. And now we want to kind of be able to focus on some of the cardio aspects of physical fitness. So we're looking at an elliptical machine and I think a treadmill because we had one that is no longer functioning. So we're going to use some of the money towards that. The other is the turnout gear. The turnout gear is getting very expensive, and we've had a number of new people. Even though we've targeted buying four sets every year, we have some new people coming on, and still we have more need than we have equipment. So we figured that'll give us a good boost towards getting some more PPE. So it's $15,998. And so that's what we'll put that money to use for, and every little bit helps. Thank you, Madam Town Manager and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good work. Thank you. The next item is just to alert the board that on March 16th, the Secretary of State notified the town through our town clerk that the temporary changes that had been allowed through statute that had been put in effect because of the pandemic, specifically related to elections in particular, that they have actually created an additional law that will allow an extension of those provisions that were already set up in 2020. What this means is that the only thing really pertaining to us that it's going to be important is the ability to vote early, do early voting by mail. So what the clerk will be circulating is a document like this will be online that you, in the past, had to read, actually have certain conditions to ask for an absentee ballot. This will be nonconditional, that if you need to vote and want to vote by mail, you'll be able to do that, and you'll be able to request that online and do that. So the clerk's office is gearing up for that ability so that our town election will have that in effect, and this will be allowed to continue up to June 30th, 2021, unless the state extends it beyond that time period. The next item is just to alert the board that police union negotiations have been going really great. We actually formally concluded the negotiation sessions on March 25th, where the chief and/or the town administration and union representatives have come together and had done a lot of work on several different aspects for proposed languages. I will tell you that I really appreciate the actual sense of working together and partnering on the areas that seem to be mutually agreed upon and considered to be important, and that will be before the board after legal counsel looks over those areas that we have adopted in negotiations as being in agreement with, and hopefully we'll have that before the board in short order. It is before legal counsel at the moment. The next item is just to let the board remind them that May 7th is finally coming around the corner. That has to do with a tax title auction, land auction. And once again, you can go on www.zecusgroup.com to look at the number of parcels. You can see that they had been actually put on the local, you know, Zillow and the like. And so we're going to proceed. That will be at Carbuncle Pond, and it will be from 12 noon. Not Carbuncle Pond, that would be pretty bad. It would be in the middle of the pond. Carbuncle Beach House on the banks of Carbuncle Pond. That is where the actual auction will take place. So please tell people, spread the word. They're always, it's always good to be able to be helping get the word out to people. The next is just to let the board know that it's been a very draining year for many employees as we've all really tried to rise to the occasion of providing services under very unusual conditions. And recently, I had had some conversations with our HR specialist, Joanne Frederick, and also Laura Wilson at the Senior Center. And since we're so in awe of the work that Deb has been doing as our culinary chef, we are going to be hosting an employee appreciation drive-through luncheon on Monday, March 12th. And I wanted to invite the board, if they want to come, and help distribute any meals to our employees. I just wanted to offer that as a way of thanking them and showing our appreciation for all the work that they do. And to get them on the meal plan in the future perhaps, because right now, we do have a program for employees. Our seniors get a very great deal for their meal plans, and that is $3 for these all-home-made delicious meals. And we do have one, obviously not for that amount of money, but where employees can partake in that. But this is just, you know, a thing that for our staff development and morale that we thought was important to do. So invite any of you to come. It would be starting at 11:45 and go till 1 o'clock, and we have different staff that come in at different time periods. So that would be at the seniors.
Jen, Jen, excuse me. Do you mean April 12th?
Did I say? Did I say? Yes, next Monday. What did I?
No, it's printed March, and you said March, so.
Oh, oh, gosh, no, I'm so sorry.
I just wanted.
Thank you. See, now you get to do this for me today. That's, I appreciate that. Sometimes we have a lot of different dates we're trying to keep track of. So I appreciate that. Well, the next item is just to let the board know that seasonal employment, my office was notified by the Executive Office of Labor and Work first on March 26th that our application for seasonal employment was approved for the upcoming summer months. The community center is trying to plan on rolling out some programs that it was not able to necessarily host last year. Obviously, it's a continuing moving target. Our numbers are still not as good as we would like to have them for the town, but we need to plan going forward. And so local residents can apply. We have four seasonal employment positions that were approved, and those include head lifeguard, lifeguards, summer program, and and also program counselors. And you can go on our website, and those positions are already posted, and we look forward to being able to have some local residents participate in that regard. The next item I just wanted the board to be informed of is the Jocelyn Annex demolition. As you'll remember, we had put out the request at the town meeting in estimation of what it would cost to demolish the building behind the Oxford Community Center that was formerly modular school building. And we appropriated like $57,000 for the demolition. That was based on what we had actually done for the wooded school, and, you know, we figured we were in the ballpark range for that. Our new director for Public Works had come on board and had noticed that we needed to do a hazardous materials assessment of the buildings. And that was done by Fuss and O'Neil Firm. And unfortunately, we have some bad news about the building. There are hazardous materials that are on site. And there is an estimated abatement cost of about $195,000. That certainly is not what we were hoping to hear. That does not include the demolition of the building. So I'm currently working with our director and looking at our options. I'm also looking at some state agency potentials for abatement grants, and also talking to our legislators about potentially being able to assist us in the future with this project. And it's very important that we get the building down. But obviously, we can't do it without conforming to abatement, hazardous materials abatement law. So I wanted the board to know that, but we're going to try to keep the project moving and find some solutions to that. I also just wanted the board to know that the senior monthly luncheon menu is out for the month of April. The Young at Heart Cafe is working quite actively, and you can go online to see that. And I did say to the Laura Wilson, we'd have that posted, and we have. Hugh Anott wrote, "I wanted to inform the board that we had complaint that was just kind of indicative of the kinds of complaints that we do get, you know, across different departments." And so the board office, your office, and also the manager's office have received a complaint concerning some buildup of trash and debris accumulating around the Lowe's Pond Dam area, which is not currently owned by the town, but it is in tax title. And there was concern that there had been formerly a barrier, and that some of those rocks had been moved, and people were parking in that area and leaving debris behind. And so I just want you to know, we had touched base with Steve Esposito and the DPW. They went out and swiftly responded, and the resident thought it was just terrific, and we've included that in your packets just as a way of showing what our departments do on a regular basis, and I thought it was important to highlight that. And the reason why I'm highlighting that is because in your packets as well, as well as perhaps it had been sent to you in a separate email, the Lowe's Pond Dam is a project that has been on the horizon for us. If you'll recall, before COVID in 2019, I had met with the Massachusetts Office for Dam Safety, as well as an engineering firm. They had approached my office in the town to talk about whether we might consider being part of a new abandoned dam pilots project. We were one of six communities that they identified a dam that had been abandoned, and that they were willing to look at trying to assess the overall safety of the dam and do a full engineering assessment. I am going to send you the link that is 315 pages because the assessment of the engineering firm has come back. But I sent you the executive summary, and basically, that summary was done by AECOM, which is an engineering firm. They recently came back with this Phase II evaluation investigation report, which gets very much into the weeds of all the work they had done that fall prior to the pandemic striking us. And what I've been told now is that Oxford is going to, fortunately, be the test case for this great partnership that they're looking to do. In other words, they look to see whether a dam should actually be removed or reconstructed. If you look underneath the overall executive summary I provided you, this is like a $2.4 million project in order to keep the dam there, but to repair it. And what the state is hoping to do is to take a number of dams like this that don't have any ownership, that are important and may not have a big enough residential property ownership around the waterway that's in question, try to take it, repair it, and then have the hopes that the town will then accept. the hopes that the town will then accept the property. Since it's in tax title, that would be something that the town would normally do if it didn't have a burden of fixing a dam. So if the state will take that over, that's a good thing. We have other dams that the state doesn't own that we own, and, you know, we're constantly trying to find grants like the McKinnon Street Pond Dam to get it fixed. So being the test case for this, in the end, to be able to potentially have it fixed and then the town be able to be in partnership with the state, I think is a great thing. And I know that many of the property owners would be very happy with that because it wouldn't be something in which they lose the beauty of the property that they're on and the waterway would be maintained and it would be no longer a hazard. So stay tuned. We're not at that stage yet, but we are at the stage of them saying that we, they would like us to, you know, be the first community out of the six to go forward and because they've done a lot of the work on it so far. But I'll keep the board apprised as we go forward. The next item is just to let the town know that Aquarian Water has notified the board and the manager's office that they will be clearing the water mains, starting on April 5th, which was yesterday, and concluding on April 14th. This is part of their regular annual maintenance, and you can go online, both here at town and at the Aquarian website. So if people notice discoloration in the water, there might be minerals that are being stirred up, but not to be alarmed. The next item is just to give a follow-up. Our memorial monuments restoration projects have been going forward. That was done in part by a grant that we were able to get for the historic monuments we have for refurbishing them and actually replacing one of them. The update from the Frank from Colonial Stone, we had John Sad Selectman who participated in looking at what they were, had for an approach to each one of the monuments and had approved it along with Terry Cummings and some other people. But the Spanish-American monument, they actually put a real true monument for that on the common. It is now wrapped and in preparation for a rededication. The Vietnam Monument's refurbishment is basically close to being completed if it isn't already. The World War II monument will soon be completed, and the World War I monument, which I did show to the board through the process of the actual bronze plaque, that has been done. But the committee that was selected to try to look at that particular monument, which we knew was falling apart with the rerod showing through and the degradation of the cement base, the decision by the committee was to go forward with moving that monument more in the same area but further back from the road so it wouldn't suffer from the elements and the salt and things like that, and to replace it with a true granite monument base. And I did get some word from Frank from Colonial Stone to say that because there was a COVID breakout at the manufacturing plant for the actual granite stone, so it's a little bit behind, and they're still hoping that they're going to get it done before Memorial Day, but I'll keep the board apprised of that. And before I go into the final COVID announcement of case rates, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that the Oxford Food Shelf had just two recent retirements. One of John Neeland, who has been with the, and been chair of the Oxford Ecumenical Food Shelf for 18 years, and Doug Selby, who with his service in combination with John have actually exceeded more than 50 years of combined volunteer service in feeding the hungry in the town of Oxford and beyond. They have just recently decided to retire, and I know there was a nice article about them, but I thought it would be nice if this board might want to have them before and them and offer their congratulations on the hard work and perhaps give them a proclamation in recognition of their service. And I've asked the chairman, so I think we'll have them come before the board for that. And the final one is to let us know that COVID is still here. Unfortunately, as of today, we have 56 active cases, and that has ticked up from about 30 and 35, and we have over 1,000 cases. We have 1,091 total cases since reporting began. And unfortunately, I have the sad news that since March 26th, we've had another two members of our community pass away, and that brings our total number of deaths since the pandemic started of Oxford residents to 19. We're going to continue to work very hard on getting ourselves forward. Obviously, we want to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. I know that our Board of Health and our Director of Public Health is working on even another initiative for homebound people that are not able to get out and looking for a vaccine. And we're going to continue to push as much as we can to get as many people vaccinated as possible. And with that, I just would like to say thank you to the board, and I hope everyone had a nice Easter holiday, and that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. We go to Selectman announcements. Selectman Triano.
The only thing that I have is that, given that we are in April, it's that time of year again, I didn't know if we were going to put the Town Manager Review on an upcoming agenda.
It's happening.
Do we know?
I believe the way it's set up right now, we're going to have it at our next meeting. You should be getting information on that, I believe, tomorrow.
Great, very good, thank you.
Yep.
And that's all I have tonight.
Great. Selectman LeBlanc.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm sorry. I, first of all, I wanted to say congratulations to John Neeland and to Doug Selby. I think that that's, I read the article, I didn't realize they were retiring, and certainly they've done a significant amount of good in our community and, you know, grateful for all that they've done. So I just wanted to say that as, say that. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I had asked if at some point, if next meeting or one of our meetings, we could put the Main Street Project on our, on our agenda for discussion. I know this was a really full agenda, and I'm certain that next agenda will be fine, will be pretty quick as well. Maybe we could put it on the agenda for maybe after the town meeting at the, in the beginning of May, then, so that we, so we could just have a discussion on it as a board and get an update and understand what's happening. But I'm happy to defer that until after the town meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that's coming too. I'm just waiting to hear back from Jared.
Got it.
Because I want to have him, yeah.
Cool, thank you. And that's it, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Selectman Daniels.
Not a whole lot tonight. One, wow, that was a long meeting with a lot on it. Just good job with all the moving parts and all the projects that are coming down and just keeping up with everything. And everybody who came out tonight to have the open public meeting, thank you so much for remaining civil throughout it. I know sometimes with these things, people can get heated and emotions and all that stuff, but, you know, again, just very appreciative that everybody was respectful, got their point across, and we were able to move forward with it. And then the last thing I just want to put out in regards to the COVID-19 cases, I can't remember if I sent it to your office or not, Madam Town Manager, but just want to throw it out there that FEMA is offering assistance for anybody, any family that had a death due to COVID. So there is an application process out there, and you can find it online on the FEMA website. If you have a loved one that passed away from the COVID pandemic, you can apply for this, and they will grant you money to help with your costs.
A bit of that piece of it, so thank you, Selectman Daniels. I will look at that and, and perhaps pass them on to any immediate family members if we can let them know about it. That would be terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you very, very much, Mike. The only thing I have is, is related to COVID too, is that all I can say to the public is don't get complacent. Don't think that just because people are getting vaccines and stuff that this thing's over. In fact, if you look at the numbers lately, the state numbers have been climbing, the positivity rate is, is gone up, and the number of deaths is still there. And so I can speak from personal experience that it's still around, okay? It's still here, and you need to, you know, do the best you can to protect yourself and your family. Wear that mask, social distancing, it works, okay? That's my two cents. And so that's all I have, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending, like Mike said, pretty long meeting, but we got through it.